Nineteen seventy-eight was the what you call it.
This session is at seven thirty-five PM and we have one topic this evening and that is the voluntary school transfer form that Steve just walked us through in our board meeting. And what I would like to do is open it up for comments, questions.
I do have a question for kind of finding. Where if the kid, the student receiving special services?
Yep.
On the last bullet, once the place student is no longer assigned to the attendance center, all family members have to return to their home school. So in a situation of a sixth grader leaving who was receiving special services, they move on to junior high and say they have a sibling that had been in that building from two to fifth grade and that next year would be sixth grade. We're saying that sixth grader has to leave that school and go to their original school.
The sixth grader would actually be an exception because they qualify under the capstone. Students that would be younger than that in the past, they've then had to fill out their own voluntary transfer form. And if there were seats available, we allowed them to move in. But there were times when we had students in particular with special ed programs where they were placed in a building that was already overcrowded, they were able to bring a sibling along with them. And then when that student matriculated on to seventh grade, we weren't able to approve the voluntary transfer for the younger sibling who may have been there for two, three, four years with their older sibling because there's now no space available in the building and they had to go back to a home attendance area. Not ideal.
It's not. That one, that one just bothered me quite a bit. I mean, I don't know what we can do as a board, but that bothered me as well as the one with that Sean brought up when we were talking about employees. I wasn't thinking just this year. I was thinking along the same lines that as something for our employees, we were going to do that. And I know Paul raised the concern that that seems a bit unfair.
Because for me, I kind of resonated with you around the central, the retention schools. We're trying to do a lot of the work around, let's say, which group, even with the color, for example, we're keying on that, is this something that could help bring teachers, parents, teachers to the district as an incentive? I mean, it feels like it would be, but I'd like to hear.
Maybe even before he talks, I'll just give you the framework for how I wrote the exceptions when I sat down with Amy and Matt and we went through them. We literally wrote them as what's in place and preserving rights for people to whom we'd made promises already. So we didn't expand beyond anything that was already in place. So permanent kids that had come in before fourteen, fifteen, we'd already made a promise to them. Sinus kids, we'd made a promise to them. So what we essentially did was say, to whom have we made a promise? And then that was the exception that we put in there. So we didn't go above and beyond anything that was, anything other than what we'd already said. So I just want to make sure that you understand, we did not feel it was our place to extend any exceptions beyond promises that had already either been made explicitly to students or implicitly and had not been formally voted on, for instance, those grant elementary attendance area students that we talked about, but simply hadn't taken formal action on at this point in time. So what you have in there are promises either explicitly made or implicitly made or explicitly talked about but not acted upon. So that's, that was all we placed in there. So certainly, if that latitude go beyond that, this would be kind of what we would consider to be the minimum that we've already talked to various subgroups about. I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that you knew that context.
I mean, I'll be honest, though, that one, the one with the demographic balance transfers, there's a couple in here that I understand, I see the benefit to them, but I probably wouldn't be in favor of. The teacher one, again, that, once we, I think it's, I think of it like transportation issues, it's either black or white. So once we start making it gray, then we're saying that like my kid or this kid, because we're, we have teachers, spouses, are more important and deserve other options that your kids don't. And I don't think that's fair. You know, so I think people, you can look at it both ways. My kids shouldn't be able to transfer to where my wife teaches just because she's a teacher if Sean's kids can't transfer to the same school, you know? So I understand the point about the teacher retention and perks, but I think we have a lot of great perks in teacher retention. If that's the one that's going to make the tide turn on recruitment, then yeah, I'd go for it, but I have a hard time seeing that be the one.
My counter to that is I think the, the ending or limiting of voluntary transfer for, the reason to do it, right, is to ensure that we have equitable learning environments for our kids there, like in the schools that they're going to go to. If we're going to do all this work, right, we want to have an equitable learning environment there and letting people go all over the place, it messes with that, right? So the positives for the kids, the allowing any exceptions to voluntary transfer in most cases of the, some of the good cause ones are not for the kids, they're for the parents, right? And I think if we're going to do something for parents, I think I would put our staff ahead of some of our parents because, you know, we're as successful as our staff is in our school district. You know, it is a little thing that does something, I think it's positive, I think it's a boon there that we can use. Is it going to be the sword I fall on? Probably not. But I do see a distinction there and I see that as an easier line to draw than just about any other exception you might put into place. So that's where I lean towards it. But I totally get your point of, you know, it's an inequity in access for everyone, so if we're trying to get rid of inequities, that's counter to that. But that's, that's kind of my reasoning as to why I see that a little bit differently.
Well, we never got any numbers on what it.
We don't know for staff. It's not something that we track.
And it's not just teachers.
Right.
Right.
What are we defining as staff?
Everybody.
Brown's crew, Paris.
Food service.
Food services, the words.
Yeah, and we don't know that. What I can tell you is that the first two categories on there, the permanent transfers from fourteen, fifteen, the sinus transfers from fifteen, sixteen, those guaranteed ones, there's fifty-seven students in that group. Keep in mind, remember from your chart, I've got those numbers right here, we have somewhere.
So in the, in your first bullet point, there are fifty-seven, fifty-seven students that are affected in that.
Right, and remember, we have seven hundred and eighty-six kids on voluntary transfer last year. We don't have our numbers in yet because we're right in the middle of doing certified enrollment.
The employee.
That would include the employees in there.
So you said fifty-seven for the first two bullets.
Fifty-seven combined for the first two bullets, yeah. So.
Oh, for the first two?
First two.
Sinus and.
Sinus and permanent together is fifty-seven.
So it's probably not a whole pile.
Well, we don't know because of that other, so if you, if you start taking out the students that we're looking at and saying, well, we're not, we're going to grandfather them, so we're not worried about it, you know, you start to take that seven and fifty number and whittle it down. So now you're under seven hundred. How many of those under seven hundred are staff? We won't know that. If you look at the form, if you scroll down, one of the things that we have to ask, because that wasn't a statistic that the data, or data that the district kept track of, was we literally say, does your student meet one of the exceptions above? And if so, which one is that? So we can actually go back and build a database. So if Paul's children were transferred, we'd now be able to enter their children as staff members type of thing.
And I think there's a great, many staff that do not do this now. So I don't think it's like there would be a huge amount.
We don't think so. I ask anecdotally.
All decide to do it.
I ask anecdotally a handful of principals who are unable to identify any staff members in their building who transferred anyone.
Did you speak to, or maybe we should try to connect with Brady, or at least.
I did talk to Brady about it. They, he was unwilling to take a position on behalf of the ICEA because it's not something that the rep council has talked about. He was a little ambivalent about it for the exact same reasons that you've talked about. Is it, A, an opportunity to help incent teachers to teach in places where we would like to see them teaching? That might be a plus. On the other hand, he was concerned about a perception that they would be getting preferential treatment, that other members of the community aren't provided. So he was.
They have that option now, so we'd basically be taking it away.
Well, then everybody has that option now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't, without knowing numbers, I'm going to postulate a little bit, but I wouldn't think most of the staff in our district, at least not the full-time teaching staff, are going to say, oh, you take a voluntary transfer, I'm out of here. I don't think that's going to be the straw, right? I do see it being potentially a bigger recruitment tool, if you will, for like paras and other support staff.
Now, I will say that when, when Brady and I talked about it, one of the reasons that you see the language in here, the way it's written, was part of his rationale as we went through and talked through this, and again, I talked to him, but we talked about staff in general, was that if staff members know this is the case and the issue is that they want their children in a building where they're at, knowing well in advance would allow them to then request the opportunity to transfer into their home attendance area, in which case they would be then bringing their kids to school with them because if they were food service or custodians or teachers or support staff, they could request to transfer from where they are currently working into the building in their neighborhood.
Do we allow that with Durham as well? Because I know when I first got on, there was a big concern with Durham bus drivers that would contract for certain lines because it would be their kid's school.
Sure.
And their, their logic was, okay, I, the kid comes with me to work, we get on the bus, when I come to the school, the kid gets off the bus, same thing at the end of the day.
Yeah, and that'd be separate because Durham employees aren't, yeah.
I understand, and I can't even remember, my mind's turned to mush, but I can't remember far back then exactly how that got sorted out, whether Durham ever did allow them to.
I believe that they allowed them to bid on those jobs.
Well, I think, I think, I think that's kind of how I remember it as well. So they may or may not, they weren't guaranteed, but they had the opportunity.
I think they created a system where they could do that.
Yeah.
So part of Brady's feedback was, given enough advance notice, that would give staff the opportunity that were interested in that ability to be in the building with their kids, the opportunity to request a change in assignment.
So that would play out for the other workers?
All employees, food service, custodians, paras.
And would be willing and flexible to try to accommodate those requests?
We have more turnover actually in our support staff than we do in our teaching staff, and so it'd be far easier, to be honest, it'd be far easier for us to accommodate that in support staff than it would be in teaching staff, simply because some buildings have very few openings in any given year.
Yeah.
In teaching staff, whereas most buildings have quite a few openings in other support staff.
But I have a question about the language. So right now, if I'm an employee, it reads as though I can enroll my child not only in the building I work in, but in the building. Is that our intention or am I missing something? Because it doesn't say anything about.
We didn't, we looked at it as we looked at the other categories, if you are an employee with a child on voluntary transfer, that we would grandfather that in. We didn't specify if you were moving your child to your building.
Well, because right now, they're just in the mix with everybody.
Right. But that's, that's, I think our question I'm posing, what's our intention? That they can have free rein to any school where then I kind of, with Paul.
No, yeah.
Or, or is it that?
Yeah.
And that's what I'm saying, the language doesn't say that.
Right.
That our intention is that you can voluntarily transfer your child into the building you work in. Right now, it reads as though.
Right.
You can send, if your attendance is Alexander, you work in Alexander, you can send your kid to Shippensburg.
I mean, I would be in favor of the building you work in.
Yes.
I think that's the perk and the benefit. And I don't think, I don't, I mean, I think it's a bigger perk for support staff and paras, just purely financially, teachers make a lot more money than those folks. So those, any benefit we give them is, is a bigger benefit.
But if we're able to accommodate by allowing them to work in the building that where their students attend.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm skeptical that we would be able to do that as much as we can with kids. I just, I.
Do we also give them the preferential treatment to get into before and after school program then, at those schools?
I don't think they should get preference. I mean, I think every time you go to a new school, everybody goes to the bottom of the list.
I know, so.
And, and that could be a factor in the, in the staff saying, well, then I can't do that. Because I do think that that crosses over then when we start expanding it beyond this issue. I would say it only applies to this issue. And if you can't get into before and after, that's a situation to work out with that program, not with the school. Because you don't run all the, I mean.
I know, but if it's truly a financial perk to do, and now you can't get a child before and after school, well, now you're paying for it somewhere else.
I think that.
I mean, you're getting into a lot of what ifs. Like, why, why not, why stop at this? Why not ask for discretionary busing to happen because I can't, I need to teach at eight, my kid needs to go to school at nine, but I don't get busing now.
I'm thinking of a situation of a parent that stopped being a parent in the district because the hours did not give her enough hours to pay for childcare and she needed to be able to be with her kids and she couldn't work in the same school. I mean, it just, it didn't work out that way. There wasn't a position for her there. So she stopped being a parent, went out of job at the university because she needed to be able to make more. The parent job wasn't enough hours. So because it's, I think, I don't know what their school day is, but it's not as long as a teacher day.
Mm-hmm.
So she didn't need before and after, she just needed to be able to provide the care to her children. But if she's working in a different building, then she has to pay for before and after school care and then she can't afford to be a parent.
Yeah, and I guess I, and again, I'm not talking down to paras or teachers, but let's say that parent is making, I don't know, what's an average parent make?
Full-time, six and a half hours?
Yeah.
And then betty's at thirty?
Okay, so they make thirty thousand. So you're going to have this one individual that makes thirty thousand, maybe single, maybe married, maybe their combined income's a hundred, but maybe this thirty thousand paras got a spouse that makes a hundred thousand. So now you have, like, where are we, are we going to go right on the? Exactly, so why don't, why have the?
Because the truth is, I'm telling you, something like this is going to be the straw that brings us back to work as a parent or a food service person or a custodian. These kinds, and we say thirty with benefits.
Mm-hmm.
So includes healthcare. That, they're not taking home thirty grand.
Right.
So we have paras, if they pay for family health insurance, how much would their paycheck be?
And for.
How much would they take home at the end of the month?
For crying out loud, it's an employee benefit.
I understand.
Now, do workers' shields get a discount?
But.
Is that fair to me that you, what?
If that changes, that would surprise us.
Well, that, I am.
No, but you're.
It's, it's an employee, we're talking about an employee benefit.
But is it in, is it in their agreement? Is it a signed agreement? Is it in the agreement? Are we going to add it to the agreement? I mean, now we're negotiating something that's not in an agreement.
Or goes into an employee.
Yeah.
I think we're at that point, because one, I don't think we know the numbers. But to me, it's a, it's a pretty small perk. I don't think it's going to change our, I mean, I get the fairness argument, but I would sort of, whatever we, we do for our benefits. And some of those benefits are, they're to our employees.
I mean, it's, it's moved to continue to be this, I mean, it's like six to one of those, I'm not, I don't care. What I'm saying is I just want it to be fair and.
I hear you.
And the right thing to do.
So I looked at policies at ULIAN schools and those that I can find online, and I did find an interview, this is listed, it says a parent working in the building during the same year. So, you know, again, it would be if the teacher transfers out, your kid gets to stay there.
Yeah, no, you lose it.
No, you're loose, I mean.
I mean, that would be my.
I feel like it's something we can try.
Yeah, and I, this is.
We're tracking the data and we try it and we see how it plays out and is it helping us with retention, is it helping us keep people, you know, in their positions? Maybe it's balanced with the other option of, of giving the employees the opportunity to go to their child's homeschool? I mean, so the two, voluntary transfer for them, but also that other option, see how it plays out.
We're, we're getting to, you know, probably more argumentative than it needs to be on something that we don't have an upper thought, right? We could be arguing.
And that's what I was going to say is.
Over two people, right?
We won't know that until April first. That's not a number I will know.
And as Ruthina brought up, the language is to what it says.
I think you need to clarify that.
That I can rectify for next week.
You're going from grandfathering to perhaps.
Yep. I've already made some notes for changing the.
Thursday, we need it for Thursday.
Oh, I could do it for Thursday, sure.
We need it for Thursday.
I'm just saying, it's important as you go from grandfathering to future, if you're just going to leave it as the grandfathering, everybody else is getting grandfathered to whatever school they're in, right? There's no context there, so it would be hard to do both of those things at the same time, to say, all right, yes, the staff get to do it, but it's got to be your homeschool because some of those.
In a sense, think about it more like a capstone transfer. So a capstone transfer is a current fifth grader whose parents move and then they get to stay for sixth grade. So essentially, it's more along the lines of that kind of transfer where your parents have moved, so you get to stay. In this case, your parents work here, so you get to go there. So it's only for that particular year. So I can definitely rewrite this so that it looks less like the three above it, more like the ones below it.
I'd say just separate them. A category for grandfathering and a category for, we will consider your transfer if dot dot dot. And then, you know, what they are. Another thing that I, I'm not married to this being in it, but I found interesting that Sioux City, they explain why they want to maintain the integrity of their boundaries. And I'll just read it too. It says, failing to maintain boundary integrity effectively allows choice of an attendance center unrelated to residency eroding the benefits of these boundaries for those who abide by the board's boundary policy. Therefore, parents of the guardians, blah, 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 are required to enroll their children in the attendance center in the boundary of their residence except under such limited and specific conditions as may be granted under the state law. So I, I don't know if we want to give the context of that in this or, or not. I thought that was interesting. They use the benefit as a boundary. It's to maintain the integrity of their boundaries. Because that's, that's really, I think, why we're having this discussion, because we have to change boundaries.
I think the last thing I'll say after that, to that point, I guess that goes back to why I would be against it the other way is because now we're saying to, I don't know how many parents it is, five hundred, six hundred students, you can't transfer, these kids can.
I totally get that and because all of the arguments that are popping in my head, but what about the staff who has dot, dot, dot? The arguments we will hear about, what if a non-staff has dot, 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 right? And how do you argue for or against that? And again, I would, I would put it to seven hundred kids voluntary transferring really affects our demographics. But if it's a handful of staff children, that's not going to change anything. So like, again, it's an easier line to draw than just about any other exception you might put in place because it's staff versus non-staff versus this situation versus this situation. But it is a difficult argument to say they get to do it and you don't, if no, your reason is exactly the same.
And, and the reason I point out transportation is that maybe you do that, transportation appeals a lot. It's either you live two miles away or you don't.
You draw the line.
You know if it's one point nine nine, because some of us at that table are at that one point nine nine and the house next to us is at two, you know?
Again, as far as I'm concerned, when we get those, we should, we should have a policy that we fill the bus. And if it's the next one, the next man in, the next one on, and if it's.
That's not a topic of conversation for the current board agenda, so technically we'd be violating oldark's law for having a conversation about busing.
For me, it feels like a pretty clear-cut rule. I'm sure there'll be gray areas as we get into the certain specific requests and I guess, but it feels like a pretty clear-cut rule that we can be there with. And it's a rule, it's, it's a benefit, it's, it's not clearly what I'm saying.
I guess I'm open to seeing what type of feedback we get, you know, Thursday from our community, you know? It's all pitchforks and room stakes saying, how dare you let some people do it without others? I mean, it, it's not inconsequential, right? But I don't think we can.
And I would like to see some data.
And I can separate the two in my head, but I don't necessarily can. I mean, I, you know, in my work life, I always tell people, if you ever kind of in doubt of what to do, fall back on following the letter of the law because you always have that, right? And so even if it's maybe not, wasn't the right decision, at least you'd say, I followed my own rules. So I get that, you know, just going to draw the line, draw the line. I see that argument too. I just see, I see as a benefit and anytime you can provide a benefit that's almost a no, a no-cost benefit to your employees, I think that's a whole other thing. And I want to, I would like to see data because I, you know, I want, I mean, if, if somehow this like upsets our demographic balance, I'd be like, oh, this up there, but I doubt that it's going to be that many.
Because they have the option now, so, you know.
So they could be doing it now.
They could be doing it now.
I know.
But everybody has the option now.
Right.
Right.
But I just don't think many, I wonder how many staff are taking advantage of it. My guess is of that seven hundred, it's probably not close to half. It's probably, you know, maybe ten percent.
And it may be a cost to us because what if that number, the way we set up our RAM schools puts us over.
Well, I think capacity is always, in fact, I don't know if we even want to include a line.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is it cannot affect capacity, but it could put a grade level over to where they have to look at another staff.
Well, in that case, that would be definitely.
I think we could, we could say, you know, with the exception of the law, things are conditional to class size. I mean, so I don't like the idea of having a new class just because one student is transferring in.
Right.
At Muscatine, I know I keep going to these other districts, but kind of very interesting, at Muscatine, they do in their policy actually specify that, they specify a number and they say, if it goes over that number, you will be denied.
Oh, total?
Um, in a class.
Oh.
So, yeah.
For classes.
Says, students will generally not be transferred into classes containing twenty-one students or more, so that room is available for the students who move into the school neighborhood. So they need to have like a cushion.
So if you did a teacher, you would have to have a set of rules under it too to where they could, could not.
We can.
Which I would be more comfortable with even though.
It wouldn't be guaranteed. It would have to meet sort of criteria before it's a transfer. So, yeah, let's take it out on Thursday. I think if we could get some of the language changed though, to be clear that we're talking about transferring into the employee's school.
For as long as you're there.
For as long as you're there, yeah. For that year, I think. Because, you know, if the parent stops and can't learn, we don't want them to have to. Quite right. And, and maybe we could get some feedback from Brady. I don't know if he would want to reach out to his folks and check, see how valuable it is.
Well, I would ask, I would ask, I would ask. It does feel a little weird to have the conversation without the data. I think we're a pretty data-driven group and we're all speculating what it means.
Yeah, but you're also looking at the current data and you, you know, you've got to realize we've got to favor another staff too.
Yeah, that, that was the argument that was in my head that I was realizing was the same argument that any parent's going to have, is that, you know, we have very young staff that might have one kid right now and might have three other siblings at home still, right? And that argument's going to come up from anybody who's not staff also, and so, yeah. I'm arguing why it's okay in one spot and not in another. I'm kind of pissed at Paul.
I just appreciate them having the discussion.
Okay, any more on that one?
The rest of it.
On the other item or the? No, no, on that topic, that one exception. That particular, yeah. Okay, other exceptions noted here that we want to discuss?
I brought it up, I guess I'll talk about the demographic balance transfer, I think is going to get into some muddy water that we're in, depending on Joe's.
Yeah.
What he decides and then also the way that the form is filled out, then who decides if they're free to reduce lunch or not, if they lose that status just to go to a certain school and.
And I wrote it very broadly. I just put demographic in there as the term, rather than specifying any particular demographic statistic in there, because I, it's literally a placeholder until we got a legal opinion on it, because I'm not sure how those will play out.
Well, and, and I, I have a problem with having it there as a placeholder if we don't have a legal opinion, because it'll be part of the discussion and we, we can't answer it.
So Waterloo, at Davenport, they're doing this right now?
Inside the district or between districts?
Inside the district, yeah. The, Davenport's policy is very specific. You're either a category A person that has free or done, free or reduced lunch, or they actually have an economic survey you can fill out, or you're a B person. And if you're a B person who pays for lunch, you cannot go to an A school. If you're an A school, it's a... I, I might be saying, I, I'm, I'm, okay, you know what I mean. You can't go to another B school. If you are an A stu-, A, a person on free or reduced lunch, you can go to a B school.
If you're a B category, can you go to an A school?
An A school?
Yes, you can do.
You can go to a school with higher percentage of...
Yes. So they're very specific. Waterloo is less specific. What they do actually, they have, they define their, their schools. They clustered them together, and they've said that you can voluntary transfer only into B schools if you're in, within the cluster of those schools. And I don't know enough about Waterloo's schools to know if these are based on equity clusters or what. But, but I'm just saying that in Davenport, it's, they're doing it right now, so it must be legal.
So, yeah, maybe we can...
And it's specifically around free or reduced lunch.
Poverty, not racial.
They call it a diversity plan. So...
Yeah, but what if I had boys for A to B?
Income. So you fill out an income survey, or you...
They have an economic survey, or you can go with free or reduced lunch status.
So it's not racial, other categories?
No, no, it's, it's purely SES.
Okay.
And then they have, well, I'm just going to say, they have a whole policy. This is a policy with the definitions and everything. So it's, you know, several pages front and back. It's very complicated.
You want to move them?
No, this is Davenport. Yeah.
Can you say something, Fiona?
The other thing I wanted to mention, this is a little bit away from that, so I apologize. In Muscatine, they actually give you a penalty if you provide false information, and that's determined sometime during the district. Do we do that? Do we rescind the transfer if we find out somebody's provided false information?
If you look way down at the bottom, it says, all voluntary transfers are subject to cancellation upon. And one of the things it says is verification that the transfer request information provided was inaccurate or incomplete.
Okay.
It's been on our form since longer than I've been.
Design, city, address, it's Wisconsin.
Mm-hmm.
Lori, did you?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Did Muscatine say who, or how they check that, or who checks that?
What it says is, applications which contain false information, including information about residence or custody, will be rejected, and decisions based upon that false information will be rescinded immediately.
So, what, can we, can we push our friend Joe for some kind of... I would really love for this to be part of the conversation in Thursday, if at all possible.
Yep.
I mean, I have, I have one specific example of a parent, a Shemek parent, who transfers his kids to Manham. And it's because they want to have the kids in a diverse school, with different languages being spoken. I mean, they, they were not comfortable in Shemek, just because of the culture and what they were looking for for their kids' education. I mean, it's a great example of a B category going into an A school for the kinds of reasons we're trying to, that we believe our balanced diverse schools are pretty, that we're more than invited to diverse students. They're doing that now for that very reason. It's a good example. And we want, we want, we have models of that, right?
Certainly have an example at Kirkwood, and we, there was an email of examples, same thing with Kirkwood, that. And, and I, you know, this is probably, I would also assume there's, that's a pretty limited number, even though it does help our demographics. I don't know if it's going to sway things, however...
There's five kids, maybe not the wrong, wrong, no, the school, but that's what helps.
I mean, my experience has been at Kirkwood, is that the families who choose to do that also then are very engaged, and they, they bring a lot as far as PTO involvement. And then, you know, this is totally anecdotal, but you bring in, I mean, that, and oftentimes, our high FRL schools struggle with that, and, and it's not, frankly, it's probably an economic thing. You know, people can't be as engaged in school because they're working second through shift, and that PTO meeting is not. At a time where you can go, so, but then, you know, so then those schools end up not having as much of that sort of support that's really beneficial to the school. And when you can have people who come in who might bring that, is, is really helpful. And frankly, people who also are trying, similar story, they want a more diverse experience, which hopefully what you get as we kind of keep doing this work is more of our schools look more diverse, and they look like more artistic, and people don't feel this...
And they appreciate it. They, they see the value in it, and is it some education that's...
And we have talked about the RAM as being, for some people, an incentive. If it's small class sizes, you don't, if you don't like your large class sizes at, at your low FRL school, you might choose to go to a school with low class sizes, that's high FRL.
I mean, I initially had a negative reaction to this, and I, and I think it was around fairness. I mean, I remember I couldn't talk about it last day, I didn't have the right words, but, but having spoken to this one parent who's doing this very actively to ensure his kids have got a diverse environment to, to learn in, it, it kind of swayed my opinion, that maybe something that we could codify and, and, you know, be fair.
I think less of a sort I'm willing to fall on than the staff one, and I, I'm thinking, again, because I'm probably postulating how many people that is, so thinking that it's a very small number. I do feel like the work we're doing is, in order to have better balance in the schools in the first place, and so you're less likely to be able to help us by transferring. Although we're well aware that there are plenty of pockets around our district that we're not going to be able to satisfy by carting out a whole chunk and moving, right? It's just not going to balance there, so there may be a few places where it's applicable, but I don't know that it may be enough bodice to choose either. So, I think it's, the reasoning behind that, I have something behind, like why you would do it, and that it's a good thing.
It'll be an interesting question to decide to do that when we get to talking about parents, and then deciding which one school you are at, and then we can leave. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So if you have Longfellow and Twain, for example, and you have someone that doesn't want to go to Twain, and we're transferring out, although the home school is Longfellow?
Yeah, but there will be...
It becomes less of a need, the mobiles start schools...
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree, I was just saying that. Just trying to think if you're like, will we do something like that, like how?
But I would see if we paired, we'd probably take the FRL of the whole cohort. And then that would determine whether you can...
But it's, but it's your FRL. It's you, if you are, right? It's you are a parent.
Yes, but the school you go into makes a difference. So you, you can't, so like, that model would be, you could transfer into a low FRL school. You could only tran-, you know?
Unless you are yourself an FRL person.
That could transfer into a low FRL.
Interesting. Well, I mean, I, I do like the more explicit rules around it, right? Like trying to define that, this is okay, that's okay, that's not okay, that is okay, that's not okay. And it's very self-out, and it might be a bit more complicated here.
I, I think, this is one where it does get a little complicated. I, I think it is, will be necessarily somewhat complicated, some sort of formula. But I'll tell you, I, I also think that this is beginning to lay the groundwork for how you do magnets, because you're going to come up to the same kind of a thing. Who gets to go into that magnet, and how is that decided? And, and it, and it isn't going to be easy, because capacity and, and if you have a magnet, you are trying to draw certain people to your magnet, and usually based around either demographics, you know, FRL kind of stuff. So it's, you're going to...
You'd have to move someone out.
Or make sure there's capacity there, yeah, right. Because I think generally with a magnet, I think the idea would be you don't move folks out, that you, you don't want to do that.
Right.
You want to provide for whoever's there, and who comes in. And so that, I just think that's going to be, it will be complicated, and it'll be a challenge. And districts do vary, you know, from lotteries to various things. But we're going to have to have some policies that are, feel a little complicated.
Yeah, I'm much more in favor of black and white, green, black, and white, and gray, because they can appeal it. It goes to Matt, Steve, it goes, then it would come to us, and now we're either deciding black and white, or we're going to go down the gray road.
Or if it fit into the gray area that we created already?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I guess this is why I wanted to try and get our community meeting ahead of the next work session, because I think what we really are going to have to do is, they'll have what the languages around any of the sessions, you know, before we're going to vote, and we can't hold on to it. Line item veto pieces of it, right? So I think we should certainly continue this.
So what, at what level, if, just for Steve and Matt, Amy, at what level? So this, if this was a policy, and people knew, okay, if I apply for X, Y, Z, and I meet the criteria, I'm pretty much guaranteed. But sort of what amount of discretion do we have for you guys just to sort of make decisions where you know the intent of the board, and maybe it's not as convoluted as, I don't know, a form where they kind of know, but it's a little bit more admin decision about, you know, this is what the board wants? Because we're not going to, I mean, I don't, you know, people can appeal this, but I mean, I don't know. We don't really want people sharing their income levels and things like that in a public way.
See, as you read through most of these, they're pretty cut and dried. The permanent transfers, we'll know. Did you apply prior to the fourteen, fifteen school year?
We already know them.
SINA, you know, we'll, we'll know if you fit that. Students receiving special services, we'll know if you fit that. Students who live in the grant or elementary attendance area, one of those three other ones, we'll know that. So all the grandfathered ones, cut and dried, we know exactly who those kids are, not an issue. Now that, I've changed it now to annual exceptions. Capstone transfers, cut and dried. We know if you're in fifth grade last year, you're going to be in sixth grade this year. District employee transfers, I wrote, students of district employees will be allowed to attend the employees' employment attendance area through completion of the current school year. Well, we know where you work, so if you're going to, if you're there on September first, your kid can stay. Cut and dried, we don't have to worry about that. I now put demographic balance in italics, because I don't know what that's going to say. So obviously, that one could be one of discretion. And then the last one in there, so there's four in each, and the last one in that one is the good cause exceptions. And those sound a little squishier, but they're really not. I mean, when Matt and Amy and I have a good cause exception, and it's one of these three areas, the movement area, you bring your stuff in and tell us where you live, we figure that out. The pervasive harassment, there's a specific process. Have you filed a complaint? Was the complaint founded? Boom, done. The severe health, that one's probably the, the one that has the greatest level of latitude. But as Matt can attest, the physicians have now, in, in Iowa City and surrounding area, now have a better understanding of the level of explicit detail that they need to provide in order for us to make a decision, and they are very specific. So it makes it very straightforward for us when we read through those to say, clearly, the attendance area is directly tied to the health issue. I mean, we could figure that out from what's in there. There are very few now. I can't remember the last time, we had to go back and ask a healthcare provider for more information. They're very, very detailed in that. So although that one sounds a little grayer, it's really not. So the only one in here that really has any gray in it right now is the demographic balance one.
And if we define that, those sort of like Davenport, then...
We work down a funnel.
And if it's, if it's FRL-based, then we already, we already told this about black students. You know, very likely, you are, are eligible for free or reduced lunch. You can request a voluntary transfer to a, a school that's, that's certain percentage of...
Percentage, whatever.
Exactly. I mean, it, I, I think we can actually get pretty specific about what the criteria are for approving these or not approving these. So it's not a bunch of, you know, behind-the-scenes subjective decisions. And just, I mean, as we said before, without any... I don't know, and I'm, I'm persuaded by the one person I spoke to about this who was adamant. I mean, I want my kids to go to a diverse school, and I'm doing it, and it's for all the reasons they've been talking about. I hate to take that away.
And the people I know who do it are, are that way. They're very passionate, they're very adamant. They, they see the value, and I would hope, I don't know this, but if you live in, in, in a neighborhood of a, of a, one of more segregated schools, and you're sending your kid to a less segregated school, you're bringing that back to your neighbors, and they're going to, you're going to have conversations with them. And that's going to help dispel this myth that some people have, you know, the people who won't even set foot in a school and need a voluntary transfer up because of an idea or a stigma.
For me, these folks potentially become evangelists in order, in order, they, they need to be advocates for what we're going to want. I don't know. More discussion on Thursday.
Yeah, I'm arguing myself in my head, so I don't know how to talk this out, but I see, you know... I'll give that some. You know, the, the argument for demographic balance transfers is an easy one to make. We say, like, here's our goal, these transfers help that goal, these transfers don't. So that's an easy line to draw. Well, then you go back to the staff thing, well, that's not the same line, right? So then it's like, okay, well, that's a whole different argument. And I'm sitting there rationalizing every single thing I've said inside my head, trying to make them all make sense, and it's getting harder as we...
The employee one is all about employee benefit versus equitable, right?
It is, and they, the ears that that argument lands on, they're going to take the different arguments of all different pieces differently, right?
With the inconsistent objectives with these exceptions is what, is what we're saying.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. And that's what's going to cause discussion and constellations later.
So if we were to do something as specific, as a six-page document from Davenport, they do have on here that it was approved by the Iowa Department of Education. So I assume that's something we would need to seek.
And that's one of the things that, and I know this winds up being a history lesson for you, which is one of the things that we don't know. There are five districts that are allowed to have diversity plans in the state. No other districts are allowed to. They were approved years ago, and they're in place. And Davenport is one of those. And they, from my recollection of back in two thousand eleven, twelve, when we first looked at this, those are specifically related to open enrollment. I don't know if they have anything to do with inter-district trans-, intra-district transfer. We know that they deal with inter-district transfer. So Davenport, Des Moines, West Liberty, Waterloo, Marshalltown, if I have the five correct. They have state-authorized plans, diversity plans, that govern their open enrollment. I don't know what impact that this has or is tied to their intra-district transfer. That's what we're trying to...
These are also going to be very tied together, just because open enrollment is very state-mandated, and they're basically having some sort of exception to open enrollment.
Right. They have, they have one-way valves in their diversity, in their diversity policies. We wanted to do that, and the state said no.
We probably don't have it.
They simply said they're not approving any new ones.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think that's, those are all communities where there's options that they're probably trying to...
They, they, at that point in time, they said they have not approved any, since those were originally approved, nor do they intend, intend to approve any new ones at any point ever.
So we would need to find that out, if that pertains to, I mean, we have to have that, and obviously, that's not going to be done by October twenty-third. So, you know, I, I think we could still do the policy, the larger policy, and vote on it, and then have the details put together, because there's no way we can have this put together. I just, let's be real, so... But the question is, is it something the board wants to do? They want to include that or not?
I... I want to make sure it's legal, and then just double-check the Joe, but I'm, I'm actually in favor of that exception. But it's got to be legal, and then we need to do the work to do the qualifications, and the clarity. Actually, is what you just said, Sean, is kind of persuasive to me. If we're clear about our objectives and goals around the balance of equity and equity learning, this to help us achieve that goal back to the employee basement, it doesn't. And, and I would almost go, I would almost say, I'd be willing to give that link up, so that our goals around these were true to our desire for ethical schools. So in between about our... So in between about our, our criteria, yeah.
Especially if there aren't very many employees who take a man or who won't even want that. I mean, I don't wanna give employees the benefit that we want.
Yeah.
Or feel that they need.
Well, no, they support it, plus we didn't want it. Well, it's not zero, but...
Yeah.
Granted, like, I don't know what the number is of the demographic balance transfers either.
It's gotta be a handful.
Small number two.
I think these are also things that you, if we implement it, we're still gonna be tracking today, and we're gonna be better able to track it, so, and we can just always come back and say, you know, this isn't working. Because I don't think we're gonna, I don't think either one of these does great work. I don't just see any downfall. If you do it for a year and you track it.
You support it?
Paul, do you support this idea?
The demographic one? I would want to hear the...
Well, then, if we're talking about the demographic one, talking about history, history lessons, if this is still on the topic. When the Department of Agriculture got after us, it was because we were getting groups too small and identifiable, correct? How in the heck can we do it with one and it not be identifiable?
That's what I don't know, yeah.
You know, I, I think it...
That was Joe's first response.
I agree with everyone, it's a, it's a wonderful idea, and what's good and what's right is not always what's legal.
Yeah.
And, and that's why my concern with it at the discussion, without having that ruling...
Right.
And for, be it for me to question Joe Holland, but I do have a winning record against him, I think that this is gonna be very difficult.
That was the first question he raised when I talked to him today.
So I agree with you, Phil, we don't get an opinion, we should take it off for Thursday because I, I don't wanna set expectations and then all of a sudden come back and say, oh, it's illegal, we can't possibly do that. I mean, I think you're right on, yeah.
I know Steve hasn't said much about, but I, I also don't think it's probably gonna be as simple as a yes or no. I mean, and maybe it will be, maybe we'll get a straight no from Joe, or maybe we'll get a straight yes, but even if it's a yes, I mean, Lori's referencing a six-page document there articulating all those steps, so even if you get a yes, then what parameters and framework are we gonna put it on?
It might be a yes, but...
Yeah, and if it's a, it's a no in this scenario, but a yes in this one, I just think it's gonna take a lot more...
And the thing that would send this apart from what you're talking about, Phil, is that here the person's identifying themselves, they're deciding to apply, which then identifies them. So it's essentially they're consenting to the release of that information.
And we had that conversation today, too.
They're self-reporting their...
They're self-reporting.
Their status, where instead of us drawing that FRL status and identifying them, they've self-reported that. It's a good legal argument. To Sean's point, I don't think your end is gonna be very high.
It's gonna be a low end.
Yeah, I don't think you have too many people that are...
And, and honestly, as we do work balancing our schools, the need to do this is much diminished, and I mean, it's kind of a weird transitional opportunity as we get closer to more balance, right? Let's wait and see what Joe says, and it, it, it needs to come off if we don't get, I think it needs to, yeah, maybe Thursday, very latest, we need to have a call. And even then, to your point, Matt, it may be squishy enough that maybe we just don't even, I don't know, let's wait and see what Joe says.
And I think it would take a significant amount of time to put together what fits with Joe and what's approved by the Department of Education, and, you know, it's gonna take some time, not something we can do.
So maybe we should take it off then for Thursday and just wait to do that?
Just pull that particular line out.
The demographic question.
Right.
I mean, I, I can't do the Thursday, but I think it's, I wouldn't wanna not have it then come up later that we can do it and then start talking about it. This is something people I feel would want to weigh in on and at least have a conversation about. I think you can have a conversation about the idea, the concept of, you know, people who support demographic goals is something we're looking at.
Like, it's something on words mattering, and if you wanted to have it there as something to talk about, I would just change the word currently from will be considered and may be considered, and then it...
Under consideration or something.
In that line specifically, it says though will be considered, I think we can make it maybe, and then it allows you the chance to put the detail in place around it.
Still researching, I mean, you got three categories, you know, who's the, what, what went in there, where the, created a new category?
Grandfather... Grandfather exceptions and annual exceptions is the way I've described them now.
And then there's a third that's got this demographic thing, and they're still researching.
Because we, I mean, that's the conversation we've had these attendance area development meetings the whole time. We're looking at, we're thinking about, and it needs a conversation, and then people have, we learn and they learn. It's not like we're voting on anything Thursday or...
We're just gonna speak that. So, I mean, I, I, I'd like to have it there to gather feedback and tweak in a language so people know that we don't have all the answers surrounding that, I mean...
I wrote specifically in here that this topic is waiting further legal review, it's in bold, it's red, it's underlined.
Thursday, if some of the people who are bump, who are transferring into higher school and have conversations, will be transferring out, and that conversation...
Wouldn't that be interesting? The one...
Make it flash, I don't know if I can do that.
And then like response to women's?
That's...
Two minutes of spectrum.
Yeah. Are the tables gonna be set up?
Small group.
Are there going to be tables?
Yep, we have them set up right now, they're set up by, Kim and I were talking about this from a logistics standpoint, we'll have copies of the PowerPoint just in case people wanna look at it, we'll have copies of the equity statement in case people wanna look at it, that'll be at each table. We're actually gonna bring your placards with you, so we'll lay them out at the tables so people can, they know who you are. And then, depending on how many people are there, Matt and I will make sure tables are full, if there's people that come in, we'll keep them entertained until there's open seats at your table, and we will bring you new guests.
Sing and dance, or...
Yes. Matt'll sing and dance. Other duty says a sign. And then we'll, we'll, we'll rotate folks in as seats open up at your tables.
So I do like the idea of the conversation of different folks talking to each other. Instead of everybody telling us their opinion, they can share their opinion with each other. I think there's value in that. And, and I was hearing it.
The, wouldn't we have copies of the proposed board...
Yes. Yep. The revised one that I'm working on right now, yes.
Revision seven.
And we will have that posted on the, on board docs so that people will be able to look at it, I'll try to get it up tomorrow in the morning so that people have plenty of time to look at it before we get there.
That's fantastic, thank you. And who's doing the presentation?
I hate kicking off and just say, here's why we're here, or...
We presume that people are gonna rotate in, so I'm not sure that it's like a board meeting where everyone's gonna show up at six o'clock, bang, we bring it to order. I think we're gonna have people that are gonna be coming and going, so...
But I thought it would just like kick it off, you know, here's over here, we're kind of, this policy, qualifications, and within our role of working around, actually, the money environment, but I get feedback, you know, I'll kick it off and then we'll get into the table stuff, by the way. There's not gonna be something like that.
But you'll do the PowerPoint to start with?
We were gonna have that available at the tables.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna, I wasn't planning on going to that, going to that. Do you, too?
I think the top, yeah. I think the top is...
Not, not attendance, so, no, not that, but the, but this one.
Just the voluntary transfer.
Even it's got a lot of slides.
I just wanna make sure there's the information that's given, being given, how it's consistent.
We're gonna have those, printing those off, those will be at every table, so that you'll have access to that information as you go through there. Matt and I will be there, so if you need feedback, you can definitely call us over, except when he's singing and dancing.
I mean, my guess is that the people that come up Thursday are ones who are using voluntary transfer programs.
I think they will, they will understand.
And they wanna understand what the changes are, and if they have an A and a C, or A, B, C, D, so they'll be, they'll be an informed group, I'm guessing, about the program.
That's what I was thinking, you got ten sets of current status, and they're gonna be three walkers.
Now, I know we've probably covered this a dozen times, but if we go to total elimination, everybody goes to their attendance zones and things like that, we don't anticipate any problems with under capacity at some of our elementary schools.
As a matter of fact, that's one of the things that you asked us to do for next Tuesday, so I, we have nine building blocks that we're working on right now that we will bring to you for consideration next Tuesday. And the intent behind that was to make sure that the schools are right-sized for the capacity that they have. We also looked at RAM as a consideration for the number of students in the school, and then where we found schools that needed to have adjustments in their attendance area in order to make sure that they fit the size of the school. We then looked at building blocks that if moved to a neighboring district would help to close that gap and better balance the demographics. So we've got nine of those right now, which make a pretty significant impact. Adam and I have to finish it up, I found one error in the data we were working on today, and so we're very, very close to having those ready for you.
And it's looking...
It looks much better, much better.
That's cool.
And I'm, I'm really looking forward to that because I will, you know, I've said before, just saying, not voluntary transfers over, knowing that it's gonna mess up populations at schools currently without something else.
If you wanna, a little preview, I can tell you that one of our RAM one schools, the FRL percentage goes down 11%.
That's good. So, I don't know, are we transitioning to that discussion, Amy? Can I ask a question about that? About building blocks? Sure. So, since we are going to make the decision about pairing after we've made the decision about boundaries, we wanna have a Plan A and a Plan B for areas that would be potentially paired. So, for example, if we're talking about pairing Twain and Longfellow, we would have a Plan A that includes boundary changes if we don't do pairing. Plan B would be pairing, keeping the boundaries as they are. I mean, with other building block changes. I'm just wondering if we're gonna get to the end of the discussion and if, I'm trying to make sure that we haven't already made the decision before we have the discussion.
I can tell you that from our perspective, as we looked at blocks, we looked at blocks with the idea that if there was pairing down at some point in time, is there some logic to where the blocks are moved? I mean, that was part of our consideration when Adam and I went through and looked at them. We didn't make them specifically to say, well, this would fit here, but we looked at it from the standpoint of if that happens, based on conversation we've had at the table, would that fit? Does that help?
Yeah, I just wanna, I, I don't wanna be disingenuous to the public that we're, if we go and we keep Longfellow at 18% FRL and Twain at 75 or whatever it is, and we're changing things everywhere else, but we're not changing those to it, it kinda gives the message that we've already made up our mind.
I guess, maybe I look at it differently because I think the decision that we're trying to make for next year, those boundaries seem like the next week, right? If we decide to do a pairing one, then we're gonna look at another boundary change.
But are we gonna change just those two schools' boundaries if we don't pair them? Not in the context of other changes?
I guess, I mean, I guess I don't really follow necessarily what you were saying as opposed to what, what I'm saying, like, there's, like, what would change? Know what I mean? Like, if we don't pair them, then are you asking, are we going to find a way to balance them because of their numbers? Well, then I think you'd have that conversation on a lot of schools. Because just the boundary changes that we're gonna move on, we're not gonna be able to balance necessarily Alexandria or Wood or Kirkwood necessarily, or Twain, just on the boundary chains that take place. But I think the ones we're talking about may help next year, and then look at your other options down the line. I guess that's the way I'm looking at it, does that make sense?
So, I guess what I'm saying is, if, if we're, as you're talking about, with boundary changes, then those boundary changes probably would take effect in 2019 unless it was within the grouping of the school that we would decide in May is going to be paired.
I don't necessarily think that, I would think that if whatever change you're gonna make has a, a short-term positive effect...
Okay.
It's still gonna happen in 2019, you can get some effect now, right, to still try and balance that.
Okay, I just wanna be explicit that I understand and that everybody else understands what...
Yeah, I, I think...
The discussion is...
If I take some words out of Steve, I'll put some back in. What I mentioned at the board table is being mindful of potential pairings as you kind of look at these building blocks. It sounds like you're mindful of us, but it didn't drop the bus necessarily in all counts, but if you think it is important to think about, okay, this is a future stage that we'll have to look at, too, but I think we've gotta do some short-term changes now.
And are we changes, well, we'll see next week, is some of the proposed building block options we've already looked at, it did, didn't...
Right. And I can tell you that, so you've got two sets of changes, as I'm just flipping through and looking at some of the worst that Adam and I did, because remember, some of our elementary schools are of such a size that we talked about the fact that it's not logical for us to pair them, right? But it's still logical for us to look at their attendance areas if by making adjustments to the building blocks, we can favorably influence the demographic balance. So there are some of them that you're gonna see that you're not gonna look at and say, oh, well, yeah, but that school's gonna be paired with this school eventually, because to be honest with you, they're both too big to pair, kinda thing, right? But I think you're gonna look at a lot of these and say, well, yeah, that makes sense because if something was going to be paired, those would be schools that you would consider pairing together. Because what we looked at was the idea of if there's pairing, we certainly don't wanna say to the kids, you're going to this school this year, this school next year, this school this year after that. So that was kind of the framework that we used as we were going through and looking at those.
I feel like I wanna see the proposal.
Yeah.
And then maybe continue this conversation with what you've got, that proposal, and when we see what this whole popularism, you know, in that building block proposal on top of restricted voluntary transfer.
I just would hate to see Twain in particular have us, kind of have in our heads, oh, we're gonna talk about that when we talk about pairing, but we will have already voted. And then if we're honestly having a conversation that we haven't made up our minds, that Twain may be paired or may not be paired, are we going to address the FRL there? If it's in these building blocks, will it be lowered?
I mean, that's, I, I need, I feel like I need to...
But it'll already be lowered down to 2019 boundaries with the piece that's leaving to go, it's supposed to go down.
But I'm, I'm looking for a significant change, that we want in our highest FRL school, we wanna see a significant change. And I don't wanna just rely on the pairing for that because, let's be honest, we haven't voted on that yet.
Right, and I, I think it just goes back to the same point that I said earlier, like, we're, we're specifically talking about Twain and Longfellow as a parent, that's the one we've really probably done the most of, but like, whatever boundary changes we are gonna do, probably isn't gonna have a real huge impact on Grant Wood.
Yeah.
At the same moment. So we're still gonna have work to do there, even after this decision.
Yeah, more building block work.
Yeah.
In addition to talk about pairing.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, and we're gonna say, we're gonna say it the other way, right? When we, we're heavily leaning on the topic of pairing, particularly Twain and Longfellow, I can't...
Almost under 70.
The hot button, right? Then all of a sudden, we get people from around Kirkwood, say, what about us, you know? We need some, so, yeah, you can't just say, we'll get to you later, just deal with it for another couple of years, right? I mean, we've got to look at maybe, you know, some effect now, as we're able to...
I can't wait till next Tuesday, bated breath, the big reveal of, um, right?
Well, I hope you don't disappoint us. I feel a big weight right now.
Adam heard it last time.
And he said it was very, very durable, as I've seen.
He and I are that close right now.
I think Adam just fell over on whatever chair he was sitting in right now, just like just...